Good afternoon, everybody. It is 12:10 PM on Friday, March 13th, 2020. We're at the district office and we have called an emergency meeting of the Board of Education to discuss COVID-19 and how it is affecting our school community. So, I can call the roll. Mr. Guarino? Ray, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
So, Mr. Guarino is joining us via phone because he has a job far away and he's donating his lunch hour to us. Okay. Ms. Johnson, present. Ms. Ziem?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
And Ms. Odin is not here, but she said that she's on her way.
She's got the hours here right there.
Okay. Dr. Mosley?
Yep.
Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Ms. O'Gara?
Here.
Okay, and then we also have Ms. Hines. Do we have anybody else from the school department?
Mr. Patrick.
Okay, Mr. Chopra?
Garth is here.
Yeah, I got him.
Dan, Dan O'Gara, Stacy Hines.
Yep, I got all of them. I just missed Mr. Chopra way in the back. Okay.
Do you want to acknowledge our audience?
Alderman Dowd is here.
Oh, sure. Alderman Dowd is here. Alderman Kelly is here. Alderman Laws is here. I'll just say it. Adam Marcou from the Union is here. And Jen Morton from 68 Hours of Hunger is here.
Okay.
Great. That's all the people that I know. Good? Okay. All right. Do you have anything else? Ms. Timmons?
COVIDed.
Okay. Okay, so, Dr. Mosley has some information for us. So, we'd like to go into non-public to discuss that and then we will come back into public session to give people a chance to talk and to discuss the things that we can discuss publicly. So, I'm going to move that we go into non-public under 91A3A, which is regarding personnel issues, and under RSA 91A3I, which is regarding safety and emergency planning.
I second that.
Oh, we have to do a roll. Mr. Guarino? On the motion to go into non-
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Okay. So, it looks like lots of people have cleared the room. All right, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for your patience. It is now 1:03 PM and we are back in public session. We have been discussing COVID-19 and how it is affecting our community and our school district. Dr. Mosley, did you have something that you wanted to share?
First of all, I just want to say thank you to the board coming out and being a part of this emergency meeting. Part of what this is, is that this COVID-19 has affected the nation and our community. And our main focus in Nashua, working with Board of Education, all the men and the mayor, and our parenting community members to keep our babies and community members safe. And so, partly what, and we're going to get into a discussion, a little bit about giving the board an update. We want to make sure that our families know exactly where we're coming from and who we are keeping safe and our kids are our precious gems. And so, with that said, you know, I've made some recommendations to the board in terms of the next steps in this process. We will have this public discussion, then we'll get some public feedback. But the decision that the board is going to make has my full endorsement. It's student-focused and I really appreciate all of the board members taking time out of their schedule, asking those critical questions, and really keeping the focus on our students. So, there is a motion that's going to be shared publicly that the board has generated. Certainly, once that motion is made public and discussed, we'd certainly be happy to take questions and give some further follow-up regarding that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. One thing that I forgot when we came out of non-public was that we do need to seal those minutes. So, I'm looking for a motion to seal.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Timmons. Because Mr. Guarino was joining us by phone, we do need to do it by roll call. So, Mr. Guarino, you're first. Are you in favor of sealing the minutes of our non-public session?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are sealed. All right, so, thank you very much. I am happy to share with everyone that we have been looking at, we've been discussing how our school, community, staff, and students have been affected. And we've also been comparing that to the CDC's guidelines regarding what we ought to do in response to the COVID-19 outbreak to minimize the spread of the disease, condition. And so, we're using this great, there's this great chart that the CDC has on their website. We've also consulted their guides and outlines for how schools ought to respond to COVID-19. And we've been looking at what other communities in our area are doing. I'm sure many people are aware that there are about 30 schools in New Hampshire that are closed right now, most of them up in the Lakes region. And then, all of the Massachusetts communities that we border are closed right now as well. And we have quite a bit of interaction, especially with Tingsborough being right, right next door. Our students share sports places, sports locations with those students from Tingsborough. And of course, the families mingle as well. And in New Hampshire, about 40% I think of New Hampshire's population, and I don't know what it is in Nashville specifically, commute to Massachusetts every day for work. So, a lot of our families are having a lot of movement back and forth across the border. So, did anyone else have any comments to make at this point? Ms. Ziem?
I think it would be important for the public to be aware that this was shared with me by other board members. So, it's certainly not information for me, but I thought it was very interesting that they, they're looking at four symptoms and if you have two of the four, then I think actually you were the one who should get credit for that. But it was, if you have fever or cough, if you're short of breath, or if you've been exposed. So, it's fever, cough, short of breath, or exposed. If you have two of those, you should be concerned and you should call your doctor and see if you need to be tested. I would ask anybody who has two of those, please be tested because without meaning to, you could be bringing sickness to, to our babies. I love the term you used, Dr. Mosley, because when I think of children, I think of my babies.
Yep.
And they will always be my babies. My babies are 50 now. So, but anyway, so, with that said, it goes without saying that the board is very concerned and have a great commitment to this community and we want to, we want to take the safest route that we can possibly take. Thank you.
Ms. Timmons and I attended, just before this, Senator Shaheen had a table, a panel discussion with the mayor's office, with the public health office, and they shared a lot of interesting information with those of us who attended. And one of the things that we learned was that in order to be tested, you have the symptoms, your doctor says you should be tested. In order to be tested, you have to meet criteria, including being immunocompromised or having had close contact, that is prolonged contact within six feet of someone who has also been tested and found positive. With the limited supply of tests that we have, it's very difficult for people to actually be tested. Right now, there are, what did they say, 900 people under investigation in New Hampshire for where they've reported the symptoms, but they don't quite meet the criteria for testing. And then, there are, oh, I'm sorry, that's-
That's 275.
That's not for us. 275. I take it back. 275 people who meet the criteria, who have the symptoms but don't meet the criteria for testing. And then, they have 21 tests pending here in New Hampshire as well. I think there was one other thing I wanted to say about that, but I lost it.
Was it the fact that, has been mentioned that there are also a limited number of tests even available, so that's why you have to qualify-
Yes.
-before you even get that test? So, that's why self-quarantine is very important and people are having those opportunities. Ms. Odin, what was that number for? How many tests they have here in the United States versus-
A couple of days ago, five people were tested per million in this country and South Korea was testing 400,000 out of a million. So, we're far behind in testing.
This really is about getting ahead of that bell curve and getting, keeping people with symptoms as far away from each other as possible.
And so, I, there are members of the public here and I'd like to allow people to speak if they'd like to. Ms. Morton from the N68 Hours of Hunger, you signed up first. If you don't mind coming, I don't know if you can make your way, but to this chair so that we can make sure we get you on the recording.
I'm sorry, Heather, that got pulled before we got back, so I didn't get on the list.
Okay. I know who's on the list, so I can pass it down again.
Okay. Or I can just say I won't.
No. Do we need public comment before we make a motion?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Jen Morton with N68 Hours of Hunger in Nashua. And each week, we provide non-perishable bags of food for about 375 children in Nashua elementary schools who are facing food insecurity at home. We work in partnership with the schools to distribute that food. So, obviously, any potential school closure brings up questions for us as to where the children that we're currently feeding will get the food that they desperately need. I know that's weighing heavily on everyone's minds, so basically, we just wanted to ask to be kept in the loop if there was an announcement and also to let you know that we have decided to go ahead and pack emergency bags tomorrow morning, actually. So, we'll have 375 bags available with about two weeks' worth of food in them so that-
Can you tell us the location of that, please?
So, we pack at 17B Airport Road. It's a warehouse space across from Law Logistics. It's on the left side of Airport Road. We'll be there starting at 10:00 AM tomorrow. Again, we have some volunteers signed up already. We're very grateful that we have a large crew of volunteers, but we are looking for some items that we don't currently have in stock. This is, this, usually we pack on Wednesday nights and this is kind of a scramble for us. And we tried to place a special food order earlier this week and grocery stores told us they unfortunately weren't able to accommodate our special orders because of the grocery store issues right now. So, we're really looking for crackers, Ritz crackers, Graham crackers, Saltine crackers, instant pancake mix, also canned fruit or canned vegetables. Those are some of the things that we put in the bags every week and that would definitely help get the children through an extended break if that has to happen.
Is there a pick-up point?
So, if, if it comes down to the fact that school eventually gets canceled, we would deliver the bags to the schools. We're looking for volunteers. We figured that would probably happen on a very short notice.
I meant for people who might want to volunteer the food.
Yeah, so, if you would like to donate food, you can bring it to that warehouse, 17B Airport Road. I'm going to be there today from 3:00 to 4:00 and then again tonight from 7:00 to 8:00 and then tomorrow morning from 9:00 AM on until about noon, there'll be a bunch of us there packing the bags. So, yeah, any, any little bit helps. I'm not asking everyone to buy 20 cases of crackers. We're not trying to put a run on crackers at every store, but if, if people saw crackers in their travels when you're picking up other things and just picked up a couple boxes, that would be great. And we really appreciate all the hard work that all of you are doing. This isn't an easy decision anywhere for anybody and we are very concerned about the families that live at or below the poverty line or are just struggling to get by. This is going to be challenging for everybody, but especially those children. So, thank you very much for your efforts and for keeping us on.
We need to thank you.
It's amazing the work you call, the folks do. I move to tears. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We're glad to do it. We're sorry it has to be done, but we're glad to do it and we appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jen Morton. Mr. Marcou is next.
He'll walk around the ceiling.
Oh, that's smart. So, Mr. WMUR, he's going to open that door.
Maybe that door, the other door.
Wait. Sorry. It's tight quarters, but I kind of like it because it's more of a conversation.
I don't. No microphone.
I'm sorry, Adam.
Adam Marcou, I live at Ford Jewelry Lane. I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I feel like we're stuck between a rock and a hard place from my perspective. My foremost concern is the safety and well-being of our staff and our students. We have students with compromised immune systems. We have faculty with compromised immune systems, staff. We have healthy people that take care of their elderly parents and family and there is concerns about that. My other concern goes to something that Jen just mentioned was feeding our kids. If there should be an extended period of time out of school, that seems to be in progress. My other concern, which is significant, is our hourly employees and how they would be handled in a situation like this. We have members that work two and three jobs to make it from week to week. Losing a third of their income or whatever their income is would be catastrophic. We have snow days and we get those. We usually have one, not multiple in a time. We know when spring break's coming and February vacation and the holiday breaks are coming. And they do their best to plan, which sometimes is still not enough. I'm going to sit in this chair and advocate that if the schools are closed for an extended period of time or any period of time, that they be paid. I will say the same thing at the Monday night's board meeting. If there hasn't been a decision then, I am, I understand that there's a budget. I understand that Mr. Donovan does not have a printing machine in his office to make more money and that we are allotted so much by the city. So, I would look to the Board of Alderman members that are here and say, there's $900,000 that got moved that was school district funds towards health insurance. And if this was a time to maybe give some of that back and make our people whole, I would ask that that be considered by the board or another fund, rainy day, whatever, something, because I can't just sit back and say, yep, we're going to close and be done and not fight metaphorically with the board to make sure that my people are taken care of. I know that the House and the Senate are working on something with unemployment benefits, but our people don't qualify for unemployment. So, I'm not sure if I would qualify for this. The simplest and easiest thing that I can think of is for the school district to make our people whole and go into, I don't know where the money comes from, but I, people are going to suffer. It's either we go to school and we have this catastrophic event, maybe, or we don't go to school and we're feeding the kids, but the staff isn't eating either because they don't have any money to work. I don't know what the solution is, but I'm willing, and the union is willing to be part of any discussion in collaboration with the school district, the Board of Ed, the city in moving this forward while we all struggle through what the right thing to do is for our kids and our staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcou. Ms. Kelly?
Can I sit here or do I need to wait over there?
No, you can sit wherever you want as long as it's near. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You have to sit over there.
Sorry, it's the camera can't.
Can I go in front of the side of the-
Got to be one front.
Tight quarters indeed.
It is, but we felt like it would be very destructive to try and do this at our normal board room at North.
Absolutely. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. I also just came from the same meeting with the senator and I know how hard it is to sit in a chair and make this decision, so I obviously respect whatever you guys decide here. It was said potentially more eloquently by the two previous people, but one of the things that I am most concerned about as a soup kitchen board member and also someone who's been deeply connected to National Meals for Kids is food insecurity. And if we close the schools, what happens to those students who get most of their meals at school? So, it sounds like we're working on plans and have potential solutions there, so that's helpful. The other comment I wanted to make was I actually took down line by line what people should do if they feel ill because I want to make sure that we get the right information out to the public. So, they were saying there is a limited number of tests. If you're feeling ill, you should contact your PCP to see if you qualify for the test. They make that decision and then they will tell you where to go for the test. One of the people who was at the meeting at 11 o'clock was someone from both St. Joe's and Southern Interceptor Medical. And they were saying that their emergency rooms are already getting too full and we don't want more people there infecting. So, your best plan of action is to reach out to your PCP, talk to them, and get qualified if necessary for the test. And if you are feeling sick, do stay home. So, I just want to, yeah, it was important information, so trying to get it out as much as possible. So, thank you for all you do. I know how hard it is and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Did anyone else? Oh, indeed, Alderman Dowd.
Guess what the subject of my concern is?
Kids?
I don't have any problem with either decision you make. The one concern I have with all city departments that we'll be discussing at budget is not only next year's budget, but this year's budget. And so, at some point, we'll need to quantify what any impact the decision is and that goes across all departments so that we can take the appropriate plans to fund whatever we need to fund and also working with the mayor's office, try to get some federal funds if we can to offset some of the expenses, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alderman Dowd. Mr. Donovan, many people have brought up something that I was also concerned about, which is should we decide to ensure social distancing by closing the schools for a short, hopefully, short time? You had said earlier that there are plans in the works for feeding our students. Is that something you can talk about publicly yet?
There are, there have been discussions. I was interrupted by this meeting with discussions with our food service director. They, the coordinators of our food service department have met. They have some plans. As soon as this meeting is over, I'll get back with them, but assuming a week-long closure or longer, we do, we will have plans in place to provide food.
Okay.
Can't give you any more details than that, but we will have food available.
Okay. Excellent. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, not at this time. All right. So, I guess that ends our discussion of COVID-19 and how it's affecting our community. Did anybody want to make any motions?
I'd like to make one.
Oh, Ms. Ziem?
Well, I'm just thinking about, Mr. Marcou was talking about the hourly employees and so I would just, I agree with him. Those people are affected the most direly because they make the least and some of those people, $10 means no dinner. I mean, it's just that, so I would, whatever we do, if we do anything, I would, I would like to be sure those people were included as part of it. That's my personal.
Well, it sounds like Ms. Brown has a motion and let's see what she has to say.
I also want to make one comment. I do want to encourage people to write to their congresspeople, the representatives, to look at some kind of long-term state, federal, local help from different departments. This isn't an emergency situation. This is not a traditional, we take lightly, you know, it's a little ice on the road kind of snow day issue. So, we really need to think about this from a long-term perspective as well. So, please contact your representatives. And I would like to make a motion.
Okay, yes, please.
Due to the fact that we have an overlap of lots of state, out-of-state and international state staff and employees going to different events and locations and to support the CDC's recommendation for social distancing, I would move that we close the national schools for five days beginning on March 16th, 2020. All staff will have paid leave except essential personnel who will report as usual as determined by the superintendent. And then, this will be reviewed as more information becomes available.
Okay.
Does that include the hourly? When we say all staff, does that include the hourly? Because sometimes in the past, it didn't.
Okay, so, is there a second and then we'll discuss?
I'm sorry.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson. And then, to Ms. Ziem's question, you said all staff would be paid-
All staff will be-
Because I didn't write down that stuff.
All staff will have paid leave except essential personnel, which will be determined to report as usual as determined by the superintendent. So, for example, that would-
That includes moms.
The custodians can still come into the buildings and clean as necessary, as will be necessary if, whatever the outcome of the discussion about the food service workers or how that, ever that works. But it will be determined specifically by the superintendent, but teachers and perez will stay as general staff will be home.
Will be home. Okay, including our secretaries and some of the other personnel.
I was speaking more, I think of the monitors, that monitor, those people make little or nothing. And so, or the cafeteria workers. They're unionized also, but I think hourly is the right term, so.
Mr. Donovan assures me that all is all, so I'm game.
All is all for five days only.
For a period of five days. And then, we just make the further decision as it comes. We get more information.
All right. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments regarding Ms. Brown's motion? Mr. Guarino on the phone, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, so, you made a sound like you had a comment.
No, I'm just excited.
Well, I am not excited because I don't particularly want a whole neighborhood to be, you know, socially distant from everyone else, from my children. So, but that's all right. So, the motion is very long, but the essential pieces of it are that we would like to close the district schools for five days and continue to pay staff and have essential personnel come in to make sure there's cleaning and the food options for our students.
Would you like me to reread it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, maybe you could hand it to us so we get it right.
Okay. In, due to the fact that we have staff and students traveling to international and statewide events at different locations and supporting the CDC's recommendation for social distancing, I move to close the national school districts for five days beginning on March 16th, 2020. All staff will have paid leave except essential personnel who will report as usual as determined by the superintendent. And this will be reviewed further as more information becomes available.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Okay, so, we are unanimous, so we need to get information out as quickly as possible to our staff and our families to let them know that there will be no school next week and we will- and we will, I'm saying we, but really Mr. Donovan and admin here will work on plans for making sure our students are fed.
And can I just say, please, please take your books home and study for the week that you're off?
Yes, that's true. We didn't discuss that. We probably ought to discuss whether or not we are just taking this as a break with no, no online learning, or if we are trying to do online learning.
That's actually another thing that you should be writing your congresspeople about, is right now we don't have the financing for infrastructure of long-term, out-of-school, online education. For a situation like this or any other, that really needs to change because, you know, nobody likes to be going to school on 4th of July, and we need to make sure that we're educating our kids because that's what we're here for, and we need to make sure. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead, yes.
Dr. Mosley, your recommendation would be?
My recommendation would be, at this point, the district does not have the capacity, and it's unfortunate, but we don't have the capacity to do online, to do online learning, because not all of our, we don't have the infrastructure for that. And to Board Member Brown's point, that when we put together our budget and we advocate for this money, we advocate for the budget, we really need that, because now, we should not be reacting to it, but we should certainly be planning and, and this should be normal facilitation of learning. So this is unfortunate that we don't have the capacity to facilitate learning for all of our 11,000-plus students during this, this five-day hiatus. So as to, to the board member's point, that this is important, that when we talk about our school budget, that we get our parents involved, we get our teachers involved, you talk to the aldermen, you talk to your mayor, you talk to the congress, and this really shows that our public schools, we need more support. Our babies should be able to get testing like that. And I'm saying our babies, because that's who they are, our babies. And the fact that there's not enough testing, and say, two, they have to show two symptoms or one symptom, go to, we, we are not talking about the people who do not have healthcare, the people who don't have access to a doctor, who are struggling, who go to our emergency rooms because they don't have the opportunity to go, and they're still our babies. The second piece to this is that I think it's very, very serious, and I just want to say that I commend the Board of Education, I commend the mayor's office, I commend Adam, I commend our teachers, the fact that we're going to keep you safe, we're going to act proactively, and at this point, money means, in some respects, secondary to the safety of our kids. So I appreciate everyone coming here for the emergency meeting. I'm so pleased that we're together on this with the unanimous vote, and we're going to put together all of the information we need in terms of getting it out. Please, please, I know there's Facebook, I know there's Instagram and stuff, please, our website is our primary way of communicating. You'll hear from me through email, the district website, and the Twitter account that's connected to our district website. That's where you'll hear all of the information coming from us in terms of next steps and where we're going to go with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Yes, Ms. Oden?
Could we please have Ms. Morton or somebody, and make sure it's on the website, repeat what 68 Hours of Hunger could use to put in the packages? I know she said canned vegetables, canned fruits, but I think that's so important. I think it's over 40% of our kids.
Forty-four, I think.
Forty-four are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and as a former teacher, I know so many families depend upon that. So if she could repeat that, and we could make sure that's on the, our website, I certainly think there's a great need for that, and if, if we could say, if families could drop that, those things off, if they're going to contribute.
Can you make it up, Ms. Morton, or is it too tight?
Yes, no problem. Anywhere. I can, I'm definitely willing to do that.
Thank you.
So in the bag, every week, we put in canned fruit, a canned vegetable, a canned protein, like a tuna or chicken, Ritz crackers, graham crackers, or saltine crackers. We also sometimes put in tortillas, black beans, rice, one-pound bags of rice. The key is every single item that we put in the bag should weigh less than 16 ounces, so sometimes people are very generous and think if they get a big 48-ounce peanut butter, that's wonderful, but it's just one of many items that goes in the bag, and then the bag actually gets too heavy for the kids to carry. So 12 to 16 ounces is the target range for canned goods and non-perishables. Nothing can be in glass, because many of these children are carrying these bags home themselves from walking-only schools, so they're carrying them a distance. If they fall and drop, jelly is everywhere, that ruins a bunch of food. So squeezable jelly is something that we're always looking for.
Peanut butter?
Peanut butter, yep, 12 to 16-ounce plastic peanut butters, macaroni and cheese, cereal, boxed cereal of any variety, oatmeal, the 10 packets in a box of oatmeal, that's something we give out on a weekly basis. I commend you for making this decision. I have to admit, this decision made at this time, just made getting these bags to these children nearly impossible. I don't know what we're going to do. Maybe when you announce this decision, you can include something about people who get N-68 Hours of Hunger food bags should go to the schools on Monday. We're packing these bags tomorrow morning. We can deliver the bags to the schools on Monday if there's someone there that can help these families.
Yep.
I don't know, it's going to be a little bit of a scramble. And certainly, if, if there are families that feel like they have not gotten a food bag before, if they're not currently receiving food bags and they feel like they need it now, they should reach out, either through our website, or our Facebook page, or by emailing Nashua@N68hoursofhunger.org. We don't want any children in Nashua to go hungry. That is our goal, is to eliminate childhood food insecurity, childhood hunger in Nashua. So let us know how we can help. This is hard for everybody, and I appreciate your hard work.
Can you state again where they would bring any donated items?
Yeah, so any donated items right now would go to 17B Airport Road, and that is off of Ampere Street, in between Chipotle and the Restor, across from the Law Logistics Building with the truck on it. So we unfortunately are only there certain times. Today, I'm going to be there between 3:00 and 4:00, and again, tonight between 7:00 and 8:00. Tomorrow, Saturday, we will be there between 9:00 and noon. Those are the drop-off times right now, but you can always email us or find us on Facebook and message us, and we can arrange a specific donation time. If a lot of donations do come in, we could maybe open for a couple of hours.
Can they leave it there if you're not there? Because I'm afraid people...
We don't have a way for them to leave it there. It's a warehouse. It's just, it's an outdoor space.
No.
And that one door. I don't have anything for them to leave the donations at right now, but we can try to, we might be able to try to do that, too, is get something together where they could leave donations in a shed outside or something.
Okay. All right, so I know that you have a very busy afternoon, but I think we, as in the school district, will, will work out with you how to make this happen.
Thank you.
For Monday.
Great. Thank you very much.
I'm kidding. Thank you.
Do you have another question?
Do you have a phone number?
We do. It's 412-423-6368.
Can you say it again, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I just had one other item. I know we've been here a long time. Everybody needs to go home and prepare. Regarding, so we're taking a week off. Dr. Mosley, are you in communication with the State Department of Education already about what school closures might look like as far as the end of the year or how all that works?
I have had, I've been part of some discussions with the Superintendent's Association as well. Yesterday, there was a conference call that went out to the state that actually I was involved in that, but Stacy Hines was involved in that. We have not, we will reach out again.
Okay, so yes, is the answer.
We will reach out.
Okay.
And get some clarification on that. And I will report back to the board.
And then you'll report back to the board. Okay, great. Oh, good. All right, does anybody else have any questions or comments? No, any other matters that require our attention on an emergency basis right now?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we still on the scheduled for Monday night's meetings?
Oh, that is a...
We can probably, we don't have to, we could do that offline.
Yeah, I don't know. I have to think about it.
To talk about that.
Okay.
If you don't want us to go in the schools, we can always have it here.
Right, so let, let Dr. Mosley and I will discuss that, and then we'll let everybody know.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Oden. I'm going to do the roll. Mr. Guarino on the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond, is yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at 1:39 p.m., and I apologize for everyone who tried to do this on their lunch hour.